A meeting of the City of Milton Common Council for Tuesday, June 2nd. It is 7:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and here at Milton City Hall.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome, and thank you all for attending tonight. Right from the start, we have three presentations. The first one that we have on the agenda is a presentation by the YMCA regarding the Parker YMCA Scholarship Program.
Can I avoid the mic, or?
Yeah, as long as you talk to a lot of nonprofits or Dave to hear us on the phone.
Okay.
Just pretend Dave's there.
Dave's there? Okay, got it. Good evening. My name's Tom Dimble, Director of the Parker YMCA. And just so you know, this is an update of the gift you gave from the city. Sorry. I get a little amped up. A gift that you gave from the city for kids in Milton. And usually when I walk into a people get scared because they think I'm raising money. I'm not here to ask money tonight, so just relax, okay? The flyer in front of you is the campaign that we kicked off last year. As you all know, the city of Milton was very gracious in giving us $2,000 towards scholarships and financial aid to kids who qualify here in the city of Milton. So we're approaching halfway through the year. We just want to let you know it's been very successful again. Your gifts are very, very well appreciated. The committee is listed there on your sheet with Steve Bysad from Ochweizer, Dan Hoddle from the Bank of Milton, Art Borner from Mercy Hospital, and Greg Linder from Air Products, kind of our key leaders in that committee. A year to date, we awarded over $1,000 some dollars, and with the maximum being $50 and the lowest $10. So it's been averaging around $20 per child. So most of those things have gone to youth sports, in the basketball, the football, and the indoor soccer. And the remaining funds, around $900 some dollars, will be awarded to kids for summer camp this summer. And with the early enrollment way above projected, I'm sure those dollars will be well-used as well. The interesting part, again, thank you for your gift, is, you know, I read the newspaper and unemployment is down. But here's the interesting part, we're continuing to, and most nonprofits are, the discretionary dollar at the household hasn't gone up. And this year so far, we've exceeded 31% of our children, who normally would full pay for our program, are now at some kind of supplement, whether it be for a scholarship program or some kind of federal or state aid. So it's an interesting time. Again, unemployment numbers are down, but discretionary dollars don't seem to be moving along, this kind of editorial that we see, and I'm sure we are experiencing as well. So I just want to come by and say thank you. Your gifts are well-appreciated. The kids mean a lot. They kind of wonder where all comes from, but you see their smiles on their faces while they're in a safe haven and doing something productive after school. I'm sure in the summer, we knew we're doing good work. So again, thank you for your gift, and just kind of an update. Any questions, anything I'm here for at, if they have any? But I just wanted to kind of give you an update and thank you for your dollars, so.
I was just wondering, Tom, the indoor soccer program, have you had overwhelming amount of kids interested in that?
Yeah, actually, this past year at the Parker Y, again, you know, soon as the gym is full, the question is, can we build another gym? I said, I don't know. We can, I don't know if we're going to find the money. So in answer to your question, yeah, the gyms do fill up with the indoor soccer, especially in the wintertime, because, you know, the soccer enthusiast is playing year-round, and then all of a sudden, in Wisconsin, it kind of stops because of the winter. So the indoor soccer is more popular than not, just simply because of the weather factors as well, so. Okay? Again, thank you very much to the -- oops, sorry.
Thank you for coming.
Put my hands in my pocket. Thank you.
Our next presentation is by the Milton Area Youth Center.
This is a dangerous mic, I can tell already. Hi, everybody. My name's Pamela Thomas, and I'm the Executive Director of the Milton Area Youth Center. MACI just completed our fourth year of being in existence, and so I just wanted to come and give you an update. I gave everybody a handout before the meeting started, just to let you know what's happening at MACI. Sometimes I think MACI is the city's best-kept secret, because I still run into people that say, "There's a youth center in Milton?" Which blows my mind, after four years and, you know, all the attempts at marketing we've done and everything. But there's so much happening. It's not just, yes, there's a youth center, but there's so much happening there. And as we are looking at completing our fifth school year, we have strengthened programs over the last year. We were able to re-initiate our Alternative Learning Individualized Tutoring Program, or ALIT. We like acronyms at the youth center. And that is a program that is tailored specifically to students that don't qualify for special ed in the middle school, but do still need extra help. We've worked very closely with the middle school principal and vice-principal on that program, and it's created a nice, strong partnership with the middle school that we've always had, but it was really strengthened this year. We also started a parenting group this year. We're calling it Part Support Group, Part Parenting Class, because parents come. We always have a topic that we start the evening with, but then parents are free to ask questions, say, "Hey, this happened to me. Has this happened to you?" And then parents are able to give each other advice, and it's just a really nice, really nice place for parents to come and vent. I can't tell you how many times in the last four years I've spoken to parents on the phone or whatever, who've said, "I just don't even know what to do anymore." And so we have something we can offer them when they say that now, which is great. I also wanted to call your attention to some of the numbers on this handout here. It definitely demonstrates that MACI continues to grow. You can see that by the end of the school year, which is like only a week away, we will have served 3,800 hot meals to students. We do offer a hot nutritious meal every night after school. It started out as a snack, because we didn't want to replace dinner for the parents that were concerned about that. But we've come to realize over the years that a lot of our students go home to an empty house. They have parents that work second shift. 85% of our students come from single-parent homes. There are a lot of absentee parents. So we have changed that program to, we ask people from the community to bring in a hot nutritious crock pot meal every night. And then on Fridays, different pizza places in the community provide free pizza for the kids. So we are feeding Milton's youth every evening at the youth center. And, you know, my grandma always said, "Food equals love," and you really see that at the youth center. The students really feel well taken care of because of the love of the community bringing in food. Also, our volunteer pool continues to grow. However, we still need more volunteers. As we see more and more students coming to the youth center, we need more and more volunteers, especially in the summer, because we like to have mentors outside playing with the kids and doing things like that. And so more mentors are definitely a need. We do have a roster of 200 students that have been at the youth center this year. That is 200 of Milton's 7th, 8th, and 9th graders. And every day, we see between 25 and 30 kids right now. And so you can tell there's a, you know, turnaround each day, depending on what's going on at school and home and things like that. But we're definitely reaching a great majority of the middle schoolers here in Milton. Let's see, I wanted to also just put a, do a quick commercial, is that okay? We have a fundraiser coming up. When don't we have a fundraiser coming up? This is June 18th. You'll start to see this poster and hear more about it. We're having a midsummer night garden party. We have five different people in Milton who have beautiful gardens, who have allowed us to not just allow people to walk through, like a garden walk traditionally would be, but they're actually going to host a party in their garden for people to come purchase tickets and then go around to the five different gardens and experience different aspects of a garden party at the different houses. Patty Bailey is participating, and John Kordatsky, Mr. Beautiful Garden on Hilltop there, is participating. So we're really excited about this event. We think it's going to be great. So that's my commercial. I also just want to say thank you to all of you. I see faces up there that have been supporting the youth center for years, and people that we just work so closely with, day in and day out, and they're always there when we call and we need them, they show up that quickly. And so I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the city of Milton and everybody who works here so much. So thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Oh, yep. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, our next presentation is by McGuire &amp; Mears regarding the listing of vacant lands in our Crossroads Business Park.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mandy Witt, and I work for Caldwell Banker Commercial, McGuire &amp; Mears &amp; Associates. My managing broker, Bill Mears, represents the vacant land, as well as myself, that is listed out here on the bypass and 59. The last time I was here was last fall, and we talked about, or I talked about, our new website that we have dedicated to the Crossroads Business Park. So I'm going to have Al kind of take us through that just a little bit, so you know what we're talking about here tonight, in case some of you weren't here. I represent what's called the, under available lots.
I know, I was going to click on the wrong.
Okay. I represent what are called the commercial lots, which I would refer to them more as the resident, or, I'm sorry, the retail lots than commercial lots. But in that case, there are three separate parcels that we have listed. There is Lot 1 at 5.4 acres, which is surrounding the area by the future QuickTrip. And then there's Lot 2 that runs adjacent to that, and then Lot 3, that is what is proclaimed as the hotel site, okay? So that being said, there's going to be some development that's going on out in that area. Lot 1, 5.4 acres, just to the left of that is where the QuickTrip will be going. There was a rumored freestanding fast-food restaurant that was going to be going in there, that I've heard that maybe there might be something else going on. This isn't our part of the listing, this is another broker's that's handling this deal. But my point is that in order to access this area, we need to populate the area by the most attractive piece of land first, and so that's what went first. So Lot 1 for the city of Milton would be the next attractive lot. So high hopes that QuickTrip is going to bring some added business to the community and might want to attract some other people to come into this area. Some other future developments that I could see in any of those lots that we were talking about are fast casual restaurants, like I already mentioned, a pizza place, or a fast casual restaurant, a bank or a credit union, or possibly a business that lends itself to, I see you guys snickering about the credit union, don't I? I know what's going in where, so. I'm just, uses that are probably a good use for that, or things that could be used there. But where I was going was, say, for instance, there was a residential boom or something, like maybe a paint store would go in there, like a Sherwin-Williams, or a Home &amp; Lindsay, or something like that. Let's see. Again, going back to the excitement, hopefully that QuickTrip will bring to the area. That being said, QuickTrip is such a good tenant to have out there, or a good business to have out there. They do such a good job at everything they do. It might make it a little bit intimidating for other people to come out as well. So an area that I wanted to compare this to, I'm sure a lot of you go down Highway 26 into Janesville and see where the new Menards is, and the Diamond Center just went up. That land has been vacant out there since 2000, I'd say it's 2006 is when Menards was there. And if you think about the number of years it's taken to populate an area like that, that gets a wonderful traffic count, I think it kind of puts things into perspective and why things are moving a little bit slowly out there. And then when I go to industrial lots. And again, this is my managing broker's properties. He's our industrial guru in our office. We've got Lot 4, which is 18.8 acres. And this would lend itself to a larger warehouse user, or industrial user. And then if we go to Lot 5, recently, Bill Mears and myself had a meeting with Al Hewick, and he had talked about the need of industrial park, the current industrial park that you have, that has, that's over, I guess, on Sunnyside Drive and Stores Lake, that there's not a whole lot of availability for the smaller guys to come in and do something. So Al and Bill had talked about possibly taking this parcel, that's 22.2 acres, and winding down those acreages that would be available to some of those smaller users. So if you scroll to page 2, it shows, the black and white there, it shows that those parts, that parcel is shrunk down into 1, 2, 3, 4, six different parcels that are right around 3 to 4 acres large. So makes it easier for the smaller guy to come in and do something as well. Let's see. I guess lastly, before I ask for questions, wanted to make sure that all of you knew about the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce golf outing on Thursday, July 23rd, at Prairie Woods Golf Course. And Caldwell Banker Commercial, McGuire &amp; Mears &amp; Associates, and the Crossroads Business Park will be sponsoring a hole, a business hole, at that outing. So if you see it, give a little wave, okay? Does anybody have any questions for me?
Have you got any, anything from, sorry?
Any inquiries about anything?
Any inquiries about hotels, or anybody looking in this area for that?
A hotel is pretty unrealistic at this point, just because of the population and the traffic counts. It's just, it doesn't support, this town doesn't support a hotel yet, in my opinion. You know, I can try all day long to try to get somebody, but if you think about the Evansville Hotel in comparison to this, I mean, there's just not a whole lot of business. So it's going to take other businesses around this area to entice a hotel to come in. It's not going to be the hotel first, and then. So, sounds dreary, doesn't it? Does anybody else have any questions?
You mentioned something about the traffic count. Do we have a good traffic count out there yet, or is that still a little vague?
Well, according to what we publicize in our marketing materials, the vehicle, it's decreased out there because of the rerouting of the traffic and people coming into the city. You know, this statistic has been from probably last fall, so I don't know how realistic that really is. You know, I mean, how often do any of you travel out there? I don't know. I mean, I make it a point to go that way, so that I avoid everybody else, so. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just so folks are aware, this website is always available 24 hours a day online, and it is crossroadsbusinesspark.com, and the crossroads is spelled Xroads.com. And it has all of the listed contracts that Mandy referred to, as well as just other information about the community and the business park itself, and our proximity to other locations, what the business park has to offer, shovel-ready, rail accessibility, and a lot of those things. So this is what we try to push out to folks. When I have conversations with folks, this is usually the first line of information I provide them. I say, you know, visit crossroadbusinessparks.com. It makes it a lot easier for people to kind of understand and touch and feel and understand the proximity to where we are. There's still a lot of folks that are familiar with this area that don't quite understand the bypass yet, if they don't live in Milton. So it's usually a good tool that we use as kind of a first point of contact, first point of information, so.
Okay, number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do we have anybody that would like to make any public comments under number three? Also, if something comes up in the progression of the meeting that you feel like you would like to comment on, you can also do that, if you've signed in to comment. Do we have any? If you don't have anybody? Okay, cool. All right. So our next little activity we do with the city council is a short team-building exercise, which Lieutenant Chesmore loves.
Absolutely.
And our librarian has not yet had the experience, so. Can you bring the flip chart down?
Yeah, where do you want it?
Just where I usually have it. Citizen participation is welcome. You can just come up to the podium and participate. So usually I do a couple of questions. Dave, can you hear me?
Yeah, just going in a little bit.
Okay. So usually I do a couple of questions, and we're going to try and move this along, because we don't want it to take 45 minutes. So our, my first question for everybody, and nobody knows the questions ahead of time, what is rocking your world today? And there's a look of terror on everybody's face. What's exciting? What's exciting you? What's fun? What, you know, what is a great thing that's going on in your world today? Or maybe you're just grateful there's nothing bad going on in your world today. And does anybody want to volunteer to start? Thank you. We'll start with Jeremy.
I'm getting intermittent updates here. My daughter's pitching and catching in her first softball game tonight, so pretty excited about that.
We're going to go to the right of Jeremy to Dave.
Is he sitting there?
I have a vision of you sitting there.
I guess being involved in working with my son to finalize the arrangements for his wedding.
And Mr. Nelson?
Got payroll completed by noon today.
Do you want to participate, Mark?
I can participate in this kind of question. I would say it's being able to observe the development of the lives of my children as they grow.
Quit raining, so we can start to get caught up with projects, so.
Okay, so since the last time that we did this activity, my son proposed to his girlfriend, and she said yes. So we are planning a wedding too. Lieutenant Chesmore?
The city, the police department started its first day of trial with our body camera. So policy was wrote, evaluation form was filled out, so I trained four guys on use of body camera today.
That is very exciting. Lisa?
I have two. One, we hit the halfway mark in our fundraising, so we're at 1.35 for the library, and it seems to be the theme for tonight. My son's getting married this summer, so, yeah.
Now, we just have to make sure that they all come and move back to Milton to raise their families, or move to Milton. Linda?
I am planning on seeing my great niece and nephew this weekend. I'm very excited about that.
Nancy?
Well, I started 16 esterium plants from seed. They are living and thriving, and I transplanted them, and they didn't die.
There's probably more plants than I ever planned, and I can't spell, so.
Good luck.
Teresa?
Planning a good friend's retirement. Planning a good friend's retirement.
A party?
Yes.
Elena?
I actually got to do my first wedding dress fitting today.
It's a theme. This is where you learn.
Al?
This weekend, I was able to actually get away for a little bit, and although came back to the office today, it was, it was nice to be away, even though it rained the entire weekend. But it was nice to be away, but it was nice to come back to.
Maxine?
Well, I'm excited to be here, to be able to answer your questions.
And I will save the second question for our closure activity, so we can close our council meeting on a positive note, too. Thank you all for participating, and does anybody in the audience want to share what's rocking their world? No? Thank you, guys. Our next item on our agenda is approving the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody wants to be brought down? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda? All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Item number six, new business. Discussion and possible action on adding water main work to the Parkview Drive project for the future pressure zone areas. And there is a map, right?
Okay, the map is actually for the next booster station one?
Okay, so not this map?
It kind of involves the same process.
Okay.
But this one was at Public Works.
Okay.
The map would actually help, because it's just got Blanche Drive on there.
Okay.
And this part was, at Public Works Committee, they had recommended to council to approve a portion of a main on Parkview Drive. Originally, we were going to, for the booster station, proposed to put about 300 feet of water main in. But when we got the change order price, it was, you know, pretty expensive for just doing that part. And so instead, we're going to put just one water main, a stub off of Blanche Drive, into the terrace area, because then when that goes in, we wouldn't have to tear up the black top on Parkview Drive at a later date. And so that, but that main would allow us, if the booster station is approved later, to connect onto that stub, and then at some time, put in that main, which we would need anyways. But the Public Works Committee recommendation was to approve that stub out of existing water utility funds, to get that done prior to Parkview Drive being paved, so we don't have to tear it up later.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve adding a water main work to the Parkview Drive project? So I, do I hit the, I was going to ask for a motion then discussion, but go ahead and add.
Can I ask one question on that? Is the sewer being addressed at the same time?
Not sanitary sewer, or the, or the storm sewer, you mean?
The sanitary sewer.
Yeah, we're not doing really any sanitary sewer work on there. We're going to televise, hopefully televise the line, though, to make sure there's no breaks in it before we do it, just to reassure that. But right now, the sanitary line isn't, isn't being increased in size or changed out.
Thank you.
I make the motion to approve Howard's proposal.
There's a motion and a second.
And so instead, we're gonna put just one water main, a stub off of Blanche Drive into the terrace area, because then when that goes in, we wouldn't have to tear up the blacktop on Parkview Drive at a later date. And so that, but that main would allow us, if the booster station is approved later, to connect onto that stub, and then at some time put in that main, which we would need anyways. But the Public Works Committee recommendation was to approve that stub out of existing water utility funds to get that done prior to Parkview Drive being paved, so we don't have to tear it up later.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve adding a water main work to the Parkview Drive project? So I, do I hit the, I was gonna ask for a motion then discussion, but go ahead and add.
Can I ask one question on that? Is the sewer being addressed at the same time?
Not sanitary sewer, or the, or the storm sewer, you mean?
The sanitary sewer.
Yeah, we're not doing really any sanitary sewer work on there. We're gonna televise, hopefully televise the line, though, to make sure there's no breaks in it before we do it, just to reassure that. But right now, the sanitary line isn't, isn't being increased in size or changed out.
Thank you.
I make the motion to approve Howard's proposal.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item 6B, discussion and possible action on the use of water funds for the installation of a pressure booster station in the Rainbow Drive, Hilltop Drive areas.
Okay, and Jerry and Gary are here from Baxter, Fracture and Woodman, and Jerry's gonna give a presentation on the booster station, how it's gotten a little bigger than the original estimate that we had, and he was gonna go over the reasons for it, and some of the, Dan can talk about the financing later, but Jerry was gonna go over the basics of the booster station and why we need to do it, and some of the improvements that we need, so.
Thank you, Howard. I'm Jerry Groll from Baxter and Woodman. I'm gonna apologize, I've got three negative things I'm gonna talk about. All right, wait. First, I've got a cold, so if I cough in the middle of it, I'm just excited I'm okay. Second is, I'm gonna talk about hydraulics, and it's probably the most boring subject that you guys could ever want to hear about, and so I apologize for the delay. The third is, I was told that there wasn't a nice board that I could use, so I came with some really crappy presentation material, and so that's three. However, though, if you haven't fulfilled all your new year's resolutions, if I could bore you with three water principles, it's gonna help with my presentation. Here's ground looking from Parkview. It's kind of squirting over to Milton Junction area, and let's see if you can imagine what I'm drawing here. I heard water tower. I could've put Milton on there, but I think you saw this. First question, can you finish this sentence for me? Water seeks...
Lowest level.
I'm sorry?
Lowest level.
Its lowest level or its own level? I'll take that. So?
Is that correct?
When we fill...
I just wanted to know if we're right.
When we fill the elevated tank with water, what happens in your distribution system is all the way across, it provides a constant level of water for the whole town. And coincidentally, on the other side of town, we have another tank. It's got multi-legs, because it's an older style, but it's there as well, and it's the same height as this one, which is perfect, because all the wells pump into one zone and they both fill those tanks kind of together. So water seeks its own level. Who's, that was number one. That was pretty easy. Water seeks its own level.
For one for one.
Number two, has anyone been swimming in the pool lately?
Lately.
And does anybody have sensitive ears? Mine is plugged right now because I'm cold, but what happens when you get to the bottom of the deeper end?
Pressure.
Pressure. So I wanted to point a couple things out. I'll use one more color here. Which of these, this is not the real question. Which of these lines is longer?
This one.
Which is the highest pressure? This one. So even though we have a constant hydraulic gradient, we have different pressures in the city.
Well, who designed that?
Well, I mean, the hydraulic principles came from some higher pilot.
Yeah, right.
And that's, I can't change that. And somebody also put the ground down here and I can't change that.
There's no one to blame.
These were decided a long time ago when we had codes that said, this is how much pressure we want, and as you built into the city, things changed. And you see that a lot of times. Down in the river areas, you build up and then they have to have pressure zones, so you've kind of done that. All right, one more. You guys are doing good, though, by the way. This is a wellhouse, by the way. Imagine water main being like roadways, and you don't have big, big roadways going into your house, do you? You have a small drive. It gets bigger out in the street and you get bigger roads. How about the big shopping malls? Big streets, right? What do you, if water main is just like roads, what would be a good thing to do to all these things? The wells, the elevated tanks, everything else? You want to hook these up, the nice big water mains all the way through. So that's a little stretch, but it's pretty, really, pretty simple, and I'm not sure why you hired Gary to do all this stuff. All right. Those are the three things I want you to think about. Pressure, hydraulic gradient, and you, I know some of you have a smaller version of this or are low by seventeen. I want to show a couple things here. This is the south-central side of the city. It's also the highest ground area. High school is right here, and here's High Street. This map shows a couple things. It does show pressures that we modeled from our distribution model, but it also shows the topography with these, there's a green line here, a yellow line, and an orange line. The orange line represents the elevation nine fifty. I'm just gonna color a couple of those in so you can see where I'm at. There's just a few of them there. The, I'm also gonna use orange for the yellow lines, and I'm not gonna be real careful how I do this, because I didn't do real well in kindergarten either. I'll just do that, and you catch the drift, right? The very dark orange lines represent an elevation of nine fifty. Those, the elevated tanks that are here, and one is here on Rogers, the newer one. We have another one here in the older Milton Junction area, and I'm just gonna draw a dot there, because you won't see it when I draw it up in here where it really is. We've got well number four here, and well number six, which is off the page over here, and five, which is off the page up in there. And you also have a well number two, which is just south of the location here, which is right here. When we were looking at trying to develop a high-pressure zone, what's always been hampering us is that I need to have the elevated tanks connected into the main pressure zone. So what, ultimately, what I was trying to serve is I was trying to eliminate and improve the pressures in these orange areas. So the very dark orange represents somewhere between about a thirty to thirty-five pound PSI pressure. The other circle, about five PSI less than that, and then the green, five PSI less than that. So at best, I'm forty pounds here, thirty-five pounds here, and about thirty pounds in that very center. Code typically would suggest that I want to keep pressures above thirty-five pounds. So I can do that when the tanks are full here at Rogers or over here, but when those fall, then the pressures fall below and they're substandard. So one of the things that we talked about, and we've always looked at, is, and I'm gonna draw some of these bigger mains that you've got through the center of your system. And when they get together like this, you've got a couple of them that can connect it, one on the cross, we've got a pretty good grid work of connecting mains to connect all of those things together. When we first thought about a high-pressure zone, we always thought, okay, we can't take the tanks out of service and the well, so we're gonna draw a high-pressure zone right here and deal with the main part of it, not cut that out. And that was our original proposal to Howard. When he said, would you come up with a price? What would it be? We said, well, this is what we initially do. Well, we thought about this more, we talked to staff, and there's a couple areas that you can see we're missing. Those that are just above off St. John's Drive between Skyview and, yeah, neat names. Skyview, High Street, Tower Hill, all representing pretty tall elevations, correct? Another one here off Wildfire Court, and all these along Rogers. So we're missing and not providing really standard water pressures to a majority that I, that I just can't get. So staff actually pushed me and said, you've got to do a better job. Go back to the drawing board and let's make this better. And I did, and I'll show you what we're looking at. If, then, and again, in theory, I'd love to get all of this green area into the high zone. If we were to draw and make a pressure zone here... I would have all of those areas in. All through with that. Oh, I did it again. I take care of all the problems. Now, the issue is I have the elevated tank in my high-pressure zone, which I don't want to have. I have well number four in here. So what we would do with that is run the elevated tank with its own water main over to Parkview Drive, and another one through Schilberg Park up here. And I should probably use a different color than that. So ultimately, if we could do that, and we could put some smart, what's called a smart check valve at each end, I would allow this big water main to stay in service if we had, for instance, a fire at the high school, because what would happen is water would then want to come back and flow right on through there, just like the pressure zone wasn't in existence. So that's what we ultimately designed. Now, each of these is about a quarter mile each-ish, a little less than that. So it's brought the cost up, but it does solve my entire problem. A booster station, we'd locate on the grounds of the elevated tank, because there's a lot of area there, and the suction pressure would be stabilized. We would then put a connection right here at well number four, a little, a little water main installation at Rogers and St. Mary's. And on these dead ends, we'd actually install a little, small, one-inch jumper around the closed valve so that there wouldn't be any stagnant water, and actually the boosters would have something to pump through. So that would be the design. Code-wise, I may have to, by code, put in a emergency generator for that to keep it running. It's something I'd have to pass by the DNR, because I'm really right on the border of whether I need it or not, but they'd let me know that. The design would be set so that we could serve the existing area, and by adding a booster pump in the future, I would put two pumps in now with a provision for a third, to be able to then serve this entire area all the way down to Town Hill Road, which again is all in its high ground area, which would open that all up for development. So the price went up because primarily of these two water mains that were included in there. But I think the other, the plan is still solid. It still was what we had talked about before, but it solves all of your area, so that would be the long-range plan. And that's what I was here to talk about, so. Now, open it up for questions.
So the proposed development going down towards Town Line Road, the proposed development going down towards Town Line Road on Parkview Drive, you have created enough water pressure for those future needs?
Yes. What will happen is we'll raise the pressure gradient here. I could maybe show that schematically like this. I'll put a booster pump here. And if this was the limits of my zone right here, I'll raise this gradient on the downstream side by about, oh, maybe fifteen pounds. So I won't have that thirty pounds here, I'll have forty, forty-five at the hilltop, and I'll have enough capacity to serve all of those homes in the future. I've done that calculation, and we would have enough then. And the DNR likes to look at things in firm capacity, so you always have one pump out of service. So if I added another, then instead of just serving here with three total pumps, I could serve twice the area, so.
And your wells have the capacity?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. You've got a lot of well capacity. And so well four would continue to pump into the low main, low-pressure zone. This elevated tank on Rogers would continue to serve that area, and your other wells would function just identical to how they do it now. There'd be just the one added structure here and one added structure at well four. The rest of it would be above the bar, low grade.
Perhaps these aren't, perhaps these aren't related, but does this provide you with a backup? For example, a couple of years ago, when you had to, I think you had frozen pipes and you had to shut down the high school while you repaired those? Can you then maintain some of that? Does it give you a backup?
The, part of that is the, it only has the one service going into the high school.
Oh.
So we'd have to, at some time, they would probably have to have a different service coming off like a Hilltop Drive or a, or like, maybe like when the high school expands or something, it'd be a time to put a separate service in off a different main.
So it's not related to this?
Right, yeah, that wouldn't, yeah, unless they do another service line, then they'd have two ways to get water in, so. Part of the reason for, you know, for some of the extra, too, is because on the original one, there would have been some people on one side of the street would have had pressure increased, the other side wouldn't have, unless you do the entire project, so. And did you have any, like, dates or deadlines or anything, or possibilities of when it might, you know, go in and stuff, too?
The design would be pretty quick for, for this. It's a prefabricated unit. We would need to finalize that design. You'd have an option for either above-grade or below-grade structures. Obviously, the generator would have to be above-grade, but the rest of the work is really underground work. A lot of this equipment usually takes about twelve to sixteen weeks to get. So that would be, once we would finalize the design, give it, I think it could do some of the water work even late this fall, maybe, and get it ready for the, for the installation of that equipment.
Would the, increasing the potential pressure shorten the age of some of our very vintage water pipes that are in the older parts of town?
We talked about that a little bit, that you wouldn't want to increase everything all at once.
My, I was curious.
You'd do it gradually, yeah, so.
So you believe that if you raise the pressure gradually, it won't be as much of a shock to its system, but...
Shouldn't be. There, you'll anticipate some water main breaks.
I was just curious.
There would be some, but...
And the pressure increase is only restricted to this area that's south of the high school, so it's not your oldest part at all.
Right.
I mean, you got to look at those maps, but I don't think that any of this was much older than the sixties.
No, it's not, and so far, that area, we haven't had, you know, we get maybe one a year in that area, but not a lot, so. But, you know, you'd anticipate maybe a few, but it's not gonna shock the whole system, though, and just go right away, right? You wouldn't, you wouldn't go like... You wouldn't go like 20 pounds in one day.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So just to kind of set the stage, you know, the purpose of this, of Jerry's presentation tonight, which I think all would have changed our answer to what's rocking our world would be hydraulic gradients and things like that. But, I mean, the purpose of this is to kind of set the stage for what we need to do to rectify the situations that we see in the low-pressure zone over in the Tower Hill area. And the reason we've kind of brought this forward at this time is one to kind of explain what's been talked about this, even since I've been here and long before I've been here, this concept of the low-pressure zone has been talked about. You know, this is the solution that we brought forth here today. So, you know, what the request on the table is, is the council in favor of this approach, and this approach being the installation of the booster stations, which would help fix that. Now, with that being said, we still would need to answer the question of how that's going to be funded, and Dan can describe that greater length. But I kind of wanted to put together, you know, have this be sequential as to why we're talking about this, what are we talking about, what's the ultimate ask here this evening, and then what information are we going to, once we have that approval, if the council wants to approve that approach, what the next steps in the process will be on how we intend to pay for that hopefully. Does that make sense?
So I guess I'll take over the financing part of this. Thanks for the lead-up, Al.
Yep.
As you got, as everyone saw in the packet, the booster station project is about $880,000. We found this out Thursday. It was kind of a shock, I think, to all of us because it was $400,000 more than we had kind of anticipated. So what you see on the top of that memo that I sent out this afternoon is $880,000 for the booster station, $35,000 for some of the projects on Parkview, the hydrants, and a stub for future growth on Parkview. And then there's also some main work that needs to be done with the booster station. So we're looking at just under $1 million in projects. And as of the end of May, the water fund has about $605,000 in cash on hand. And what I'm recommending here is using $400,000 of that to help finance it, along with about $287,000 loan from the general fund and from the sewer fund, with the intent that the water fund will either procure long-term financing later this fall or sometime next year and pay it off, or pay it back over five years, depending on how things shake out. But either way, this project could get done and it is financially feasible. Because the water utility right now only has $280,000 in outstanding debt.
Am I anticipating a water rate increase?
The unfortunate part with this is yes.
Thank you.
I can't remember if it's the next thing on the agenda, but there's a simplified rates, rate study that we're recommending that would be a 3% increase across the board, across all the utilities, just to keep in line with inflation and other things like that. And then depending on which direction we want to go with other water projects, there would be a potential to do a full rate study again later this fall or early next year.
And how long has it been since we did a water rate study?
New rates went in effect January of 2013. We went to the bimonthly billing. And typically, we do full rate studies every three to four years, so we're kind of right in line with that. We've paid off a majority of the debt. And because we have some older facilities in the city, now that we've paid off one thing, we've got a few more things to work on, so. I don't know if that makes sense?
So what is the consequence of not doing this project?
You would restrict your development going to the south of the city. And also, it's, you're actually almost below the regulations for some of the DNR pressure. And then if people want to, in their homes, start installing more fixtures and using their basements and some other things, they'd have to do some plumbing calculations to see if they even can to meet their pressure, so. So they might be denied adding the rough-ins and stuff in their basements for extra plumbing fixtures just because they don't have enough pressure. But it also does restrict any development going to the south. And besides the amount of, I guess, customer unhappiness that we've been getting more lately with just the low pressure, so.
If we do this project, are there other projects that we wouldn't be doing that we maybe thought we were going to be doing?
Dan has those listed on the rate study for those on a couple of items down.
Yeah, I didn't list them out, but there's a couple other projects that were brought forth.
There's the well project that we have to do at some time for the rehabilitation of well number two. And then there's some other mains that are, some looping mains. But the well project and this one are pretty similar in priority because the well one is a regulation if we want to keep, you know, doing stuff with the chemicals in the well. But this one also restricts any development to the south. So they're both, you know, those two projects are pretty similar. The other ones where you, the looping of the water mains and stuff are some improvements in the system for fire protection and just where you don't have the dead-end mains. And the one main project later is a main that we've had, probably in the last 25 years, 40 main breaks in that area. So that was a replacement project.
So we would have to delay doing, fixing that, or?
No, those, if you would, those other projects, whether you do this one or not, would have to involve a water rate study.
Okay. So regardless, this isn't necessarily the only driving force behind a water rate study, if I'm understanding that?
No, actually, this one is more of a simplified water study. The other ones are more of the water study for the other projects.
Okay.
That would be where we start looking at like the, if we wanted to wrap some of those well projects in that looping system, Howie talked about, in conjunction with this booster station, if we wanted to just throw them all in one big pot and do one big revenue bond all at once, that would be the purpose. And the Public Service Commission would require a rate case at that point because we'd be looking at two to two and a half million dollars of the work.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
As a resident of Rainbow Drive, would directly benefit from a water increase, I'd like to make the most to approve this project.
Second. There's a motion and lots of second support for that. Is there any further discussion or further questions?
I have a question. It's not about the water, though. I was wondering when, once we get this, the pressure taken care of in the streets, the person that lives in that house, are they going to be, are they going to have any big surprises, even with a gradual increase in their water pressure? I'm thinking about all of the problems that we had a few years back with the sewer lines when people all of a sudden were getting, their sewers were backing up and we had done a bunch of work on some of the street sewer lines. We're not going to run into anything like that, are we? Are we?
Not on the sewer side. I don't, we won't be raising pressures above even the minimum pressure before we have any issues with, there is a cheaper standard for pressures of 65 pounds on pre-manufactured homes. It won't even be even close to that. I think people will probably be using more water because they'll have better pressure so they could take shorter showers, whether they do that or not. I mean, I think that probably goes danger part. And then in the early phase, there could be a couple more water main breaks.
Residential water main breaks?
No, they'll be on the city side. I don't think anything inside of any of the homes. Unless it was some standard pump.
And then, okay, just going back to that sewer situation, Howie, I think you remember it. Okay, if somebody does end up with those breaks or issues inside their homes, how would, is the city responsible for that? I mean, this created us having to watch the little videos, remember?
Orchard way?
Yeah. Something everybody should watch.
Something totally different.
That wasn't related to any water pressure or pressure systems.
It's two separate systems. It's like saying filling up the air in your tires isn't going to make your air conditioner inside your car blow harder. They're two, they both involve air, but they're two completely disconnected systems in that area.
Right. And I understand that, of course, the water and the water in the sewer would be, but that's all I'm saying is that if somebody does have an issue inside their home, are we going to be responsible?
No, that's, the city for water is responsible for water up to the curb, to the service, the service box for the curb. And for sanitary sewer, we're only responsible for the main, not for the lateral. So everything from that point on is the customer's.
Okay.
Didn't that have a lot to do with some roots and stuff that time that she's talking about?
It did, but it seems to me, Maxine, that we actually paid some of that.
We did, but I think there was something else broke. On Orchard, there was a root problem and then there was something else that happened with the pipes were, the sewer pipes, I think.
We lined those pipes for better.
Yeah, they were old and.
Yeah, we relined them for better flow.
Do you have a comment that you wanted to make before we vote?
Just briefly, I see the correlation you're trying to draw, and I understand, you know, the difference between sewer and water. Orchard Row was, that was a completely odd situation because we had flat laterals on a really flat main. So if anything got stuck in the pipe, just a little something, it went back up into the sewers. So that was a really different situation. But no, I don't think you're going to really see, you know, problems on the residential side of services on, you know, increasing the pressure in the city's mains. You know, like Jerry was mentioning, we're talking about 15 pounds of pressure, somewhere in that ballpark. It's still well within the capabilities of the residential pipes, so it really shouldn't be a problem.
Yes.
Before then, there's a consideration of the motion as made, I would recommend that Dan give further explanation of, again, the funding proposals and so the council can consider whether or not to include the funding approval in this particular motion or to do so at a later point in time. But at some point in time, the council will need to take affirmative action regarding the approval of the funding options. So I think it's.
Yeah, so the question is, if you guys want to just approve the project tonight, know that when we go forward with the project inherently, this funding proposal will be part of it at a future time. Or we can include this funding concept, roll it right into the proposal tonight. It can go either way.
I would recommend that we roll the funding into the project so that it is an entity in itself.
Yeah, and then at a future meeting, I'll bring forth a resolution once we know the exact costs involved, because obviously, we're just basing everything here right now off engineer estimate. So I'll bring forth a resolution once we were, once we would get firm bids.
So Dave's motion needs to be changed or amended?
Well, I think from what Dan is just saying there, I guess, from what I'm hearing him say is he's probably, okay, I'll speak up more. I've got my thing on here, but, Dave, but what I'm hearing Dan say at this point in time is that he would, I guess, recommend not having a vote specifically on the funding because we don't have great enough specificity on the funding without the project being let out for bids. And so doesn't have reliable figures yet on what that funding would be, just estimates. So it sounds from what I'm hearing Dan say that the motion as presented, which is to basically proceed with the project, forward with the project, which would involve the, I guess, the design and letting of bids would be sufficient. And then when they are let, he can come back here with a separate resolution for the funding. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I'm fine with that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second regarding the use of water funds for the installation of a pressure booster station in the Rainbow Drive, Hilltop Drive areas. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. 6C, discussion impossible action regarding the use of Cross Ridge Park easement sale revenues.
So we're going to just switch gears real briefly here. We'll stick on easements and mains and things like that, but we'll talk this one specifically about a gas main. As folks recall, back in April, the city council approved the sale of an easement to Northern Natural Gas through Cross Ridge Park. There has been kind of discussion on the staff level, there's been discussion at the council level, and there's been some discussion at the committee level as to what's the most appropriate use of these funds. But ultimately, the city council has the discretion over the use of those funds. The Parks Committee, I know, discussed it at their meeting last week, and they preferred to have those funds stay within the Cross Ridge Park Fund. So I bring that up because I think it's important that the council knows that that was the recommendation made by that group, but also to let you know that there are other options available. And from the staff's perspective, the recommendation that staff is making is to utilize those funds for the demolition of the old police garage in Goodridge Park. The thought process behind that is kind of multifaceted in the fact that we believe that that, one, would be an enhancement to a park, and, two, would remove a potential blighting influence that isn't going to get better at any, at any point in the future without any kind of repairs or investment the city would make. And while we have good estimates and funds available, staff thinks it's appropriate to utilize those funds at this time to demolish that building. However, with that being said, it's ultimately your decision. The only reason we felt that the police department made the most sense is that it is a liability that's not going to go away. If we don't do it in 2015, we'll look to do it in 2016 with some other funding source that may be, that may be tax funds. This is money that won't affect the general taxpayer of the city of Milton, and therefore, it seems to be appropriate to utilize in a situation like that where we have a known liability. And when I say liability, I mean that it's just, it's under the city's purview, it's an old building that is not getting any better, and so therefore, you know, has the potential to have a greater cost on the future. So that is, that's the kind of discussion that we've outlined from a staff level, knowing that the Parks Committee also has discussed it as well, and would like to see those funds remain in the Parks Fund.
I'd like to make you both happy.
Yep, me too.
If you had, if you're there, 15,000 to 20,000 for the removal of the old building, I'd like to see whatever funding is necessary to get rid of that building and then the remainder go to the park.
I guess I, I would have to agree with Dave. I think that the police station does need to be removed and it does benefit the, particularly the North Goodridge Park and its appearance. But that if we're going to continue to encourage these committees to work on making Milton a destination place, that they have done wonderful projects all along and they want to continue to do those projects. And if they're going to be motivated to do that, they can't continue to be dragged down with fundraising for every project that they come up with, and that these funds would motivate them to be able to do some of them.
And along those lines, I think that's an excellent point. I, just like. I'd just like to point out, the Parks Fund has how much in it currently?
Twenty-five thousand, something like that.
And we just recently added a certain percentage with the scrap fund drive, and also the seventy-five hundred dollars that the city gave to the Parks Fund through the use of our credit card. And so the only reason I point that out is to let you know that if you take this, if you take this fund and don't give it to them, it's not like they don't have anything. I don't want you leaving the cupboard bare there. So that's, but you're exactly right.
So I just want to remind and ask a few questions and just make a few comments on this. Now, it was my understanding with the Goodrich Square Plan that when the old police station came down, that that was going to be a parking lot. Is that right?
The Goodrich Square Plan does identify that area as potential for future parking, yes.
For the school?
I don't know if it was that specific or not.
I'm recalling that they had a specific layout for convenience of the school.
So my question is, has anybody approached the school to see if they would be willing to help get rid of this building?
The agreement was that they would not take care of getting rid of the building or designing the parking lot, but they would take care of the maintenance for the next one hundred years.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. I didn't know that.
That was part of the original Goodrich planning.
Okay, now, the other question that I have, and Howie or Dan, maybe you can help me with this. Do you remember how much that playground equipment was that we put out at Cross Ridge Park?
It was over twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so, and the reason that I'm asking this is because I just want to point out to you guys that, you know, Cross Ridge Park has been in the making for probably ten to twelve years. And the main reason that we don't even have bathrooms out there and that we, is because we've never had enough, a substantial amount of money to put forth to do a major project. One of the things that the committee was very clear in the discussion was we don't have a bathroom in that park. You know, we need to have, you know, we just put this playground equipment in there, but, and we're, you know, people are getting a negative attitude in some cases against the YMCA because they cannot go in there to use their bathrooms. Well, they don't do it for security reasons. I understand that. So, you know, if you're looking at even that playground equipment, or maybe the trail, when we would like to continue our trail so that you can get from the trail that's already there out to our new playground equipment, how much is that running, Howie? For the, just that little stretch of trail that we talked about?
We haven't got the new estimate, but it's probably going to be eight, eight or nine thousand dollars.
So if we want to go on around the park with our trail, and they're just, we haven't been able to do that. And I think that that's, I can honestly tell you that that is why the Parks Committee is feeling like they would like to see this money stay in Cross Ridge so that we can do, continue to do a big project like what we did with our playground equipment. And every little bit, every little bit does make a difference. And maybe right now, there's money in there, but there's, you need to remember too that part of that designation is from fundraiser and donation for the dog park specifically. And, you know, we're working on, we're working on all of our parks. One of the things in our comprehensive plan that was discussed was what, you know, let's go to some of these little parks and let's put in some rockers, you know, those things that are on the great big springs, you know? I mean, I just feel like just because there's money there right now doesn't mean that it's going to be there. And I have to speak for the committee that I represent.
Sure, thank you. I'm wondering if, so, it's my understanding that the thought of Teresa and Dave is that there would money, there would, they would take some of that money, but some of it would be put back. And then I'm wondering, Dan, if this is something that we can put on a future budget agenda of, you know, Howie would have proposals and we can look at how we, you know, how we fund some of these ideas that the Parks and Rec Committee have?
Yeah, I was just checking to see what the latest cash balances in all the funds were. And the Dog Park has eleven thousand, the General Park Fund has thirty-one thousand, Veterans Park has fifteen, and the Splash Park has sixty-three hundred, so.
But we're taking, we actually have on our agenda here that the Parks Commission wants to make a donation specifically to the Veterans Monument. So, I mean, that's...
That'll take it down.
Yeah, that's going to take it down.
So, given that, does somebody want to make a motion regarding this agenda item?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Um, Howie, years ago, that there was a pump station in there. When they talk about the fifteen thousand, was that taken care of when they remodeled? Or could we run into a problem there with the water?
Okay, all of the water's been abandoned, but the reservoir is still under there. The concrete walls are under there in the basement yet. The price that we got is to just haul the building away.
Yeah, that was my question. Would there maybe be a problem once you got digging and moving that we would need more funding for?
At some time, you know, for a parking lot or something, you'd have to make sure that that reservoir, you know, is caved in or removed underneath. This just gets rid of the top building, and then there also is some asbestos removal. So there wouldn't be really anything left of the twenty-five thousand if you used it for...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that it could overgo the twenty-five, the fifty thousand.
And part of the project is the Public Works guys would fill it in, you know? It's just to get rid of the building. But we have fill materials, so that's just our time and fuel. So that's, that's not an extra cost. But the reservoir would still be there. That's not to eliminate that basement underneath. But all the other pumps and mains are gone from it, so.
Yeah, I mean, what we wrote in the memo is correct. Using these funds to tear down the old police station. Current estimates are fifteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars plus any additional costs for asbestos abatement. And we know that at a minimum, that asbestos abatement is going to be twenty-nine hundred dollars just to do the investigation. So if there's abatement on top, that can be a little pricey. So it is unfortunately probably safe to assume that the majority of that twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars is going to, would be chewed up in this project. So again, you know, it's, but the only point that I would make is that cost isn't going to go away ever until that building's gone. So, I mean, it's likely not going to get cheaper in 2016, or 2017, or 2018, or 2020. And eventually, that building has to come down. So that cost is never, ever, ever, ever going to go away until it's gone. The cost of trails and things like that, those are nice, but this cost, it has to happen. At some point, it has to.
Jeremy, did you have something to add?
Well, I guess a couple of questions, probably for Al. I know it's just been, how much are we paying right now to just have it sit there?
Well, fortunately, we're not paying much because it's been, it's been, all the utilities have been removed. So the only cost associated with it now is if there's ever any vandalism or anything, there's costs associated with that.
That would be the biggest potential liability then?
I would, I would think that that's probably pretty safe, other than the fact that it is just, you know, becomes a visual, you know, unsightly deterrent in that area as it continues to deteriorate over time.
Besides it being pretty clean in which we can take care of this, is there any other reason why we wouldn't just wait until the school district would probably be ready or at least coinciding in that effort to, you know, I'm thinking along the lines of permits and zoning and all that kind of things, if everything was done at once?
Sure. Is there any reason to do it sooner? No, other than the fact that it's unknown when that may, if and when that may happen. If that's ten years from now, we would likely experience some issues with that building between now and ten years from now. But, I mean, your point is well made.
Did the roof ever get fixed? Wasn't it always leaking?
No, we haven't done any repairs to that building ever since this one was designed. So we haven't done anything. The only expense we have is we mold them on around it.
So that's not going to help keep it if the roof leaks.
But Howie, when we did the addition to that building, and I'm going to pick your brain on this one, when we did the addition, didn't we have to deal with some asbestos on that?
The asbestos removal that they did was the open joints on the pipes, the exposed asbestos, the elbows on the water pipes. They never did any tile inspections, or if there's older insulation in the concrete in the walls, or if there's caulk in the windows, that kind of stuff because it was covered and never exposed. Those things don't get removed. So the only thing they did, all the exposed stuff got removed. But what's, you know, what's like in a floor or something hasn't been. So that's what the samples are for, to see if that's still there.
Well, it is a park, and it is an option. But I will just have to say that I have to stand with what my committee that I'm sitting on, what their wishes are, and that was to put the money towards Cross Ridge.
How would, in the future, we pay for taking this down? Where would that money come from?
It would either come from the existing fund balance or future tax levy.
Is there any kind of middle ground in that regards where we could take a set amount and make sure Parks gets something? And that money go to where it would be potentially used, I guess, for this, but I suppose you'd have some leeway on what ends up happening with it overall, but you get where I'm going with that.
Right, I think, you know, and in reference to the mayor's previous question, I mean, a lot of these conversations, you know, fortunately, take place during the budget time. You know, what projects are the priorities? What things do we want to add into the capital expenditure portion of the budget? You know, usually we're having, usually these conversations are all kind of consolidated into that September, October time. This is just a bit of a misnomer though, because these funds came along at an unknown time. And like I said, it was, this was kind of placed on an agenda at the request, you know, of council to kind of designate where this is going to go. So again, you know, as I said in the beginning, it's ultimately the council's discretion, even if you wanted to, you know, break this apart in any way, shape, or form that you wanted to, you certainly could. Or if you wanted to table this discussion for a future date, that's a possibility too. But it's kind of ultimately a discretion how you want to spend these funds, knowing that the decision you make on the use of these funds will have an impact on the decisions you make in the future on funds you use. If that, I know that didn't answer your question at all. They probably created sixteen more, but it is. You know, there's somewhat of a domino effect here when you're dealing with a known cost, a future liability like the police station.
Okay, so I'm willing to entertain any kind of motion somebody wants to make.
Dave, did Dave make one? Dave, didn't you make a motion?
Well, I said what I thought we were going to do, that I would like to use those funds to take out the police station.
So is there a motion?
Yes, I might get a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
And possibly, we've already done this, but I'm a little... Making a comment, okay, all right, there wasn't a formal motion. Thanks for the clarification. So there is a motion to use those funds to do demolition to the former police station? There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you. All right, it doesn't get any easier. Six D, discussion and possible action regarding the filing of a simplified rate case with the PSC along with a rate adjustment for wastewater and stormwater rates.
So what you have before you is, historically, the city does a full rate case like we did in 2012. And then a couple of years later, you do a simplified, and then a year or two later, you do a full rate case. And that's kind of dependent on the projects that are going on in the city. And as we've kind of already discussed, there's two to two and a half million dollars with total projects on the horizon in the water utility. And this is about the only mechanism we can do right now to have any kind of immediate impact on water revenues. When I read Alar's report from, that they did in 2012, it did state that they were projecting that we do a simplified rate case in 2014, which we didn't do, and part of that was intentional on my part because we had saved thirty thousand dollars by paying off that bond early. And that would have been about the amount of revenue that would have been generated. So I figured, well, we don't need to increase the rates if we cut the expenses. So, and at the time, we did not know about two million dollars of the projects either. So that was the reason for delaying any kind of rate increase last year. Now, we have all these projects, and invariably, we're probably looking at a full rate case with rates going in effect sometime next fall. So this will just mitigate any kind of impact that would have.
So when you say mitigate, could you say, will it ease that?
Yes, it'll ease it.
Will it have a little increase this year, will it have a little increase next year? Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we could have a big increase next year.
What was that?
Otherwise, we'd have a bigger increase next year.
Yeah, be bigger.
Okay.
And the hope is that we won't have to touch sewer or stormwater rates. And right now, when I look at the balances in the funds and the projects that are kind of on the horizon, I don't see a need to increase those two rates next year by doing a full study or anything like that. Those two funds also aren't regulated, so we don't have to go through the Public Service Commission to increase the rates because it does take about a year to do a full rate case.
So Dan, what this rate case impact on an average homeowner is described on page three, correct? And that would be effectively at a dollar?
A dollar on the water side.
Right.
Probably looking at three, three to four dollars every other month at most with sewer and with the fire protection charge and with the sewer base and the stormwater. And there's no requirement for a public hearing like there is with a full rate case. Just that little blurb that's in there has to go in the Milton Courier forty-five days before the rate increase would take place.
And just so we're clear, it's to cover exactly what projects?
The easy answer to that is the booster station, but it also is those well rehabs that we talked about earlier and that looping project. Those are the four drivers, two wells, the booster, and the looping.
Okay, do I have a motion? There's a motion and a second regarding the filing of a simplified rate case with the PSC along with a rate adjustment for wastewater and stormwater rates. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item six E, discussion and possible action on donation of three thousand dollars for the Milton Area Veterans Memorial Cost of Freedom Hexagonal Bench from the Park Fund.
So again, this is a discussion of the use of existing park funds. Dan just provided us that information that that's at about thirty-one thousand dollars. The request was made by the Parks and Rec Committee Commission to reassign... The request was made by the Parks and Rec Committee Commission to reassign, I guess, for lack of a better term, $3,000 from that fund to the Veterans Memorial Fund. And Alder Clark, I don't know if you have anything to add to the discussion that took place that night, but this was at the request of the Parks and Rec Committee to put this forth on the council agenda.
Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec Commission is just very excited about all of the donations that we've had with the Veterans Memorial Park monuments. And we just felt that it was important for us, as a Parks Commission, to also include a donation. So, we chose to do the hexagon seat. But, we need to have the council's approval to take the money out of the park fund to pay for it.
I move that we approve the donation of $3,000 for the Milton Area Veterans Memorial Cost of Freedom? A second.
There's a motion, and there's a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Are there any general items?
I have a question for Howie. I was just wondering, we're still doing the scrap drive, right?
Yes, we got a couple donations just today.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering, because one of these memos that I looked at had a different date on it. How long do you want... How long are we going to be doing that?
I think until June 15th, I thought, yeah. But, we'll still, if someone's after that, we'll still take the scrap from them. We have a place to store it, so...
Okay. And then, my other thing for you is, I made this mistake myself last year with my lawn. Could you explain the rate difference for people that are doing construction, or billing pools, or that with their water bills?
Oh, that... Actually, maybe Dan would want to do that, but there is... You can get a meter here at City Hall, if you have a garden that you do a lot of watering on, or if you have a pool. You rent the outside meter, and then, you can hook it up to your outside faucet. And then, for that water, you only pay the water rate, you don't pay the sewer rate. So, it is available at City Hall. You pay the rental on it, and then, at the end of the summer, you'll read the meter yourself. And then, there's a deduction on your bill that would come up for that month. But, you can rent those clear water meters here at City Hall.
They're $10 a month, and the break even is about 1,700 gallons, which is three continuous hours of running your garden hose.
Is there any other general items?
I will just point out that that is one of the dozens or more services that I referenced at the meeting last time, that the City of Milton provides, that the City of Janesville does not. I love saying those things, though.
Because we rock. Okay. So, our final exercise is, what is one goal that you have either for your department, if you're a city employee, or one goal you have for the city council, if you're a council member, or one goal Al has for the entire city? So... And we can start wherever you'd like to start. How about with Lisa?
I would like to add at least one more virtual service for the library, so that somebody can, in the comfort of their own home, check out a magazine online, or download
I would like to see more people on the trails and in the parks doing free recreation.
That would require more cooking and baking from Maxine.
All right. We're not going to let her off the hook, but we will connect her.
I am going to piggyback on Lisa's, and I would like to see some kind of online service for some of the permits or licenses that are done in the city, just so that people don't always have to come down here, but maybe have an online type option.
Okay, I'm next.
I would like to...
I would like to have a strategy in place to move forward on our joint fire department for... Have something in place for their future and what that looks like. Al?
I've said this a number of times, in fact, I think I said it in my interview. My goal, which is, I understand, is unattainable, but I still will strive for it, is to have a government that's invisible, that people don't even know it exists. They don't feel that they need it, because it provides what they need without even knowing.
Beam me up, Scotty. Maxine?
Well, I don't want to be invisible, but I'm hoping that I'll be able to make it for the next two years as a councilperson, and still be able to give you my opinion. You've seen my sweatshirt. Everybody's entitled to my opinion.
Congratulations. Elena, could you please put that in the minutes?
Thank you, Dave. Dan?
I'm hoping there's a way that we can get some of these neglected areas for capital projects included in this year's budget. Like Al said, it might not be obtainable, but it's a goal.
It's a goal, something to shoot for. Hey, Mark, you started the first one, so you're stuck on the second one. Pull your lawyer card out now. Okay, Howie.
I would like to get our budgeted projects finished without carryovers.
We didn't forget you. And those I will save, and I can be copy for everybody if they want to put in their Uh, Vader and Elder Person reports.
Let's go with Elder Person reports. Anybody have anything?
Yes. Originally, after our last joint city-town fire commission meeting in February, March, we had agreed to have an additional meeting then again in June. And when we met this past month, as part of our fire commission meeting, we talked about the benefit of... We're only in that meeting until August, so that we were better prepared to talk about the big issue, which would be budgeting for 2000... Well, finishing up the 2015 budget, as well as starting to prepare for the 2016 budget, since that really is a large issue between the city and the town. So, we did tentatively set a meeting date for the joint meeting, and that will be August, Wednesday, August 12th, at 7:00 PM. And I'm hoping that everyone will be able to join us that night. We will plan to meet here. And I did check with Mr. Scheiger. He'll be available to join us as a facilitator. If you have something specific beside the budget that you need to add to the agenda, please talk to me, although that really will be the focus of our meeting. 7:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Any other Elder Person reports?
I would just like to say, on behalf of the Parks and Rec Commission, that we had an incredible turnout at the veterans ceremony. And a big thank you to everyone who participated in that, and all of the donations. It's just amazing to the committee, all of the excitement about this. We're all very excited and thankful for the turnout, despite the weather. That was a little bit questionable. And then, I also just wanted everyone to know that Friday at the gathering place, there's a Door County Fish Boil Dinner. The bar opens at 5:00, and the dinner is at 6:00. And you can get your tickets at the gathering place. And then, also, Friday, June 5th, the FFA is having their alumni auction at Oak Ridge Golf Course. Golf starts at noon, the meal starts at 6:00, and the auction starts at 7:00. And that is for... The proceeds will go to support the FFA Scholarship Fund and the City of Milton fireworks.
Great. Thank you. I just want to say that I was able to see the pictures online and in the Courier for the Memorial Day dedication down at Veterans Park. And it was such a wonderful turnout. I want to thank Al for filling in for me. I'm sorry I couldn't be there, but I was so proud of our turnout and all the support that the city has for that project. It just speaks so highly of all of our residents, and it was just a wonderful thing. So, staff reports. City Administrator?
Nothing of any specific business to report beyond what we've already talked about tonight, but I will say, last week, continuing on this theme, we had a nice get-together at the gathering place for Greg Linder, who is retiring. And folks were there to kind of express their appreciation to Mr. Linder for his commitment to the community, and it was very well deserved. And, you know, getting to know Greg a little bit over the years, well, over the last couple of months, has been a nice treat to my position, and looking forward to meeting his replacement here, probably next week, Thursday.
Director of Public Works?
Sorry, Splash Park's open. It's getting pretty good use despite the cold weather. And also, next Friday, on June 12th, is the Clean Sweep Program at the Public Works Garage from 12:00 to 3:00. And you register with the Rock County Ag Department, and it's free to get rid of whatever hazardous material you have at your houses, so...
I already said the two things that I'm most concerned about. But, the third thing is, is that we have five officers running in the torch run tomorrow for the Special Olympics down in Rock County. It's a 2.1 mile. We had two officers, including me, last year do it. This year, we have five, so it's good.
That's great.
Not me.
Thank you. Director of the Library?
We had an all-staff training day in May. It was crisis prevention training. It was really, really good, followed by a meeting with our architects, FEH. So, the staff was able to kind of articulate where... Kind of finalize a little bit more of the conceptual plans for the library, so getting there.
Great. Thank you.
Fundraising sale that the Friends did with Tim's Closet this past Saturday, and then, the Teens had a bake sale. I think altogether, they both made around $400 total, so...
All right, Linda, you have used up all of your allotted time. City Clerk Deputy Treasurer?
I don't have a report.
All right. Finance Director?
I think I've done enough damage tonight.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June 16th, at 7:00 o'clock. Okay. And do I have a motion to adjourn? And do I have a second? And do I have a vote? All those in favor? Opposed? All right.